Now call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. If you guys could please stand, Mr. Berry, if you can lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams, if you could lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan County and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
I would like to note that Mr. Byerly is attending remotely.
He needs to identify from where he's calling.
Okay, do you hear that, Mr. Byerly? Hang on, I think you're on mute.
No, I didn't. What did, I'm sorry.
Need to identify the location that you're calling from.
2606 Maple Grove Lane East, Powhatan.
Okay, any requests to postpone or amend tonight's agenda? I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Sergeant.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have a special resolution of appreciation for presentation tonight, and I would like to ask Chairman Karen Carmack to do the honors on this special occasion. Ms. Carmack.
A proclamation recognizing and commending Thomas Berry for his service on the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Whereas, following a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors in District Two, Mr. Berry applied to fill the unexpired term. Whereas, on April 2nd, 2021, Mr. Berry was appointed by Judge Sella. And whereas, Mr. Berry has since faithfully served as an active member of the Board of Supervisors, given representation to the citizens of District Two. And whereas, Mr. Berry has been instrumental in supporting and assisting the Board of Supervisors with multiple projects, including the successful partnership with Firefly Broadband for the county of Powhatan. And whereas, Mr. Berry was an integral part of the process for the adoption of the 2021 Long Rage Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, during Mr. Berry's term with the Board of Supervisors, he has never failed to lend a helping hand and has been a huge advocate for his constituents and for Powhatan County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County this day commends Tom Berry for his service to Powhatan County Board of Supervisors and calls upon the citizens of Powhatan to recognize his dedication and commitment to the county. Yes, sir.
If I may say a few, provide a few comments. I can't think of a more difficult job than Mr. Berry had. Coming in the middle of the year, coming in facing what he had to face. And this job's not an easy job. This is not something you just come into and hit the ground running. Usually, it takes a period of time. As Mrs. Carmack will tell you, Mr. Cox, if you've served on the planning commission, that's a huge advantage. He had none of those advantages, and yet, he volunteered to come in and do a job. I'll have to tell you, I'm really surprised at how well he did. I'm not sure I could have done as well in the same circumstances and with the same background coming in. But he really has done an outstanding job for the county, and I couldn't be more appreciative. So, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We also have another exciting moment tonight, a piece of a resolution that we want to present. And I'll actually call on the, Mr. Tom Berry to present that resolution.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Our team here in Powhatan, which includes our elected officials and staff, worked diligently to provide services to the citizens of Powhatan. Occasionally, it is nice to stop and acknowledge a special situation where all of our resources have come together in the completion of public service, especially when we have a large impact on saving a life. One month ago, on September 25th, 2021, our emergency communications team received a call from a citizen whose husband was having a cardiac event. This caller did not know how to perform CPR and was quickly given instructions by Mary Franklin, one of our emergency communications team, while her coworker, Madison Ward, dispatched fire and rescue units to the scene. Within minutes, our team was on site and administering aid to the citizens, relieving the spouse from her exhausting efforts to save her husband. Statistics tell us that only 2% of patients that are administered CPR on the scene survived. And in this case, we are so glad to report that he survived and is doing well. I would ask that Fire Chief Phil Warner, Emergency Communications Director Tom Nolan, Sheriff Brad Nunley, Jeff Seerfoss, all come forward while we introduce their staff, some of which could not be here this evening. The staff would like to... Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. We'd like to recognize the following personnel that assisted in this team effort. From Emergency Communications, Mary Franklin and Madison Ward. And Mary was unable to be here this evening. Fire and rescue staff reporting to the scene included Jansen Murphy, John Mank, Ken Satterwhite, Carol Smith, and Grayson Walker. And our Sheriff's Department responders included Rebecca McKnight and James Sullivan. The efforts of this team saved the life of one of our citizens and show both the quality and the caring exhibited by our public safety team here in Powhatan. We were told on the phone call today by the original 911 caller, they emphasized that my husband would not be here today if not for Mary Franklin and the rescue team here at Powhatan. Team, thank you for a job well done. And do we have Carolyn or James Weaver here? No? Okay. This shows that it is truly an all-hazards group, and it is everyone, not just the traditional responders, not just the EMS providers, not just the firefighters, that work together to bring successful outcomes to those and citizens and visitors to our county. They work hard, they do a great job, and it is a great system that works well together. Much better many times than other systems as well. Thank you all for your service.
Cade Ben, first heard. Cade was a part of the team as well, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Smith, anything else under county administrator, administrator updates?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on, we will go to our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record. You have three minutes if you're speaking as an individual and five minutes if you are speaking for a group.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Rosell. A relatively new resident, Powhatan, 4209 Old Buckingham Road. Thank you for letting me speak. I was recently terminated by Chesfield County as an AP government teacher for refusing to comply with the state mask mandate. Not only did I view the mask mandate as immoral, but something just did not seem right. Stakeholders like students, parents, teachers, and administrators that would be required to wear masks as a condition of employment were not given any data on to the efficacy of masks, nor were any stakeholders given the time or opportunity to review or comment on these state or local policies. While appealing my termination with Chesfield, I engaged in some simple research that answered many of the questions I had about the mask mandates. The answers I found are quite interesting. In March 2021, the American Rescue Plan, ARP, was passed and published on the federal register in April 2021. As part of ARP includes a grant called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as ESER. Under this grant, Powhatan is receiving a total of $2,502,195, of which $1,336,801.30 have already been made available. Though it's always nice when there's more funding for our schools, there are specific requirements in the act that raise some concerns. By accepting the grant money, every school district is required to submit a plan to the state and federal Department of Education that includes a description of how the district will comply with the, and I quote, "Each of the CDC's safety recommendations, including universal incorrect wearing of masks." The act stipulates that the CDC guidance, even if it changes, must be adhered to by the school districts through full year 2023. Though I am not a lawyer or a constitutional scholar, I am a thinking man. The fact that these school districts through grant money are now beholden to a federal executive branch agency violates the exact principles of federalism set forth in the Constitution and required learning according to the Virginia Department of Education's own SOLs. Because of time restraints here tonight, I am unable to go into greater detail about the additional requirements under the ESER grant money that affect Powhatan County. My questions before the board tonight are these. When were you informed about the availability of ESER grant money under the 2021 ARP Act? Have you or any of the county's attorneys read the actual bill to fully understand what the county was signing up for? And are you willing to continue to let Powhatan County Public Schools stay beholden to a federal agency and deny the freedom of choice to its citizens to collect the remaining $668,465? If grant money for masks and CDC control are what the citizens of Powhatan want, then our elected officials have the responsibility and moral obligation to be transparent and allow enough time for disclosure and public comment. Now that I am unemployed as an AP government teacher, I have a little extra time on my hands. I've collected a lot of documentation about the ESER grant money.
I'm sorry, sir, we need to wrap it up.
My apologies. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I am representing No Left Turn Organization regarding schools and regarding the information that was just shared with you. Our organization...
Your name and full address.
Oh, sorry. Vicki Hurt, 482 Bell Bridge Circle, Powhatan. The ESER funds, I'm all for the schools getting every penny they can get. We desperately need it for technology, but this is probably not the route to go from what we recently learned. And there have been recent articles in the media regarding just this. It's not just Powhatan County, this is statewide. And I think it was very unfortunate. This was a rush job. The law was passed April 21st and found out that you had to submit your application by May 23rd. I spent the day today trying to find our application from the school board, speaking with various school board members, have not been able to secure it at this point to see exactly when the approval occurred. I went back through the board docs as well, looking to see at the school board. When this topic came up, I have not been able to determine that at this point. Apparently, no research was done, and it was very convoluted. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but it's kind of given us a situation. We kind of have the wolf in the hen house, so to say, right now. And we're faced with a situation that the schools have been put in a position that they likely are forced to develop plans to follow the CDC through the end of 2023, which is kind of scary. The other interesting thing, anytime something like this is passed, my understanding that it's mandatory that there are public hearings for all stakeholders. But because this was such a rush job, the federal government used U.S. Code 5 Administrative Procedures Act to waive the public hearings to possibly get the information out to the public. At this point, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not a lawyer either. I know you are addressing the ESER funds, the next step in that. I don't know what we want to do. I think that's something that you guys may want to discuss if we want to put it on hold to find more information out. We've already received some of the money. I don't, I wouldn't want to tell the public that we're not taking money that we so, you know, vitally and wisely can use in our schools. But it is a real problem. And I really think that we need to be very careful and be very diligent at looking at where we're getting money from regarding COVID, both in the schools and for our county, because we may not be aware of all the strings that are attached. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Steven Barham, 3492 Richards Run. I wasn't going to get up and speak right now, but after hearing people talking about the school system, I had, I ain't gonna say my pleasure, my displeasure, attending my first school board meeting the last couple of weeks. And they're talking about the federal mandates coming down. I'm concerned about that too, but I'm more concerned about the situation we have in Powhatan School System Administration, the school board, the leadership of the Powhatan school system. Like the organization is No Left Turn, they've gone off the rails. There ain't no turn. They're completely gone. I'm sorry. You know, I don't mind paying my taxes, glad to pay my taxes, especially help kids get educated. But what's going on in this school system right now is an embarrassment. And y'all are the ones that send the money to the school system. Y'all can't tell the school system how to spend the money. I know, legal. But y'all determine how much money they get. We got more administration in the Powhatan County school system than per student than probably any county in the state. Now, I'm sorry, if one superintendent, you know, staff of four or five, and a principal and assistant principal at every school cannot run the five schools we have, we got the wrong superintendent. Here again, y'all can't dictate what they do with the money, but y'all send them money. And if y'all don't cut the school budget, it's an embarrassment. I mean, it's, I mean, at the beginning of that meeting, I was in a state of shock. I'm not gonna lie to you. And most people, they need to get off the behind to start attending school board meetings. Because if not, we've lost it. And please do not give them the money to continue doing what they're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'm Kirby Birch. I live at 3140 McQuinn Road. I came tonight because you're about ready to vote on or proceed with a comprehensive plan. I served on the first, on the Citizen Advisory Committee for the very first comprehensive plan here in Powhatan. At that time, the citizens of Powhatan said overwhelmingly they wanted to keep Powhatan a rural community. And each decade since then, that's been reaffirmed. However, the camel's nose seems to slip under the tent from here, from time to time. High-density housing, whether it's in the form of apartments, whether it's in the form of small lots, produces crowding. It is the antithesis of rural Virginia. We've seen, I have seen, in my 75 years, Henrico County and Powhatan, Chesterfield County, go from suburban to urban. I've watched my neighbors in Midlothian be put upon with apartments, complexes, right up against one of the nicest subdivisions in the Richmond area. And the crowding is incredible. And what's the answer? Traffic circles. It's ridiculous. Voting on a comprehensive plan tonight does not send the right message to the citizens of Powhatan, I don't believe. Because you have an election that's going to take place in eight days. A week from tomorrow, the citizens of District Two are going to choose who their next supervisor will be. And yet, you want to move ahead with a major policy decision that will affect the growth of this county for the next 10 years and beyond. I ask you to take a step back. I would also mention to you, I believe that all four of the elected members are fundamentally conservative. So I would ask you, why can't you work together? Let's, let's back up and find a unanimous consent decision that'll benefit all the citizens of Powhatan and keep this county that we all love rural. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Robin Cupkin. I'm a resident of Powhatan 1858 Rock Point Drive in Norwood Creek. And I too, I'm here speaking on behalf of myself as a resident, but also on behalf of Habitat of Humanity of Powhatan. I am the vice chairman of the Board of Habitat currently. And I have a rather different view of the comprehensive plan than the gentleman that just spoke. As you know, we've followed, and I personally have followed and read and given input on this plan since November. And we at Habitat look forward to working with you to provide the quality housing options to residents in the near future from those who are the frontline workers, such as our teachers and social service workers, to those who are aging and want to stay in their homes or move to something smaller and reasonably priced within the county. We're certainly very interested in partnering with you, as referenced in the plan, to expand our critical repair program and explore home rehabs. Those are great options. But we're also looking at new models for housing, such as those cited in the plan, concepts such as the conservation subdivisions or agri-hoods that you discussed, the cottage court communities, and those types of things. One concern is the limited suggested areas to pursue these options, however, as you know. And we do realize that infrastructure plays a big role in this, but we know that there are only certain designations in the county for us to work within those types of plans. As the goal stated in the beginning of the plan, Powhatan will have a diverse range of housing that provides living opportunities for residents at all stages of their life. We just want to stress to you that our homeowner mortgage program serves those who make 30% to 60% of our county's adjusted median income, which currently we see as 89,400. So about 44,000 or 46,000 would fall into that 30% to 60% of the county's adjusted median income range. That happens to be about the starting salary of a teacher in Powhatan, as well as many of our other service workers. That means that they would need to be able to find a house that is priced at about $200,000 in order for them to swing a modest $1,000 to $1,100 a month mortgage payment. There are not many $200,000 homes currently available in the county. Housing truly needs to be included as an option for those people who are serving in our community through the government, through the school system, and the service sector and more. We hope that we have opportunities to create that kind of housing for the people that live in Powhatan. We thank you again for listening and for taking input.
Thank you, ma'am. And for the audience, we will be having a public hearing tonight on our comprehensive plan. So if anybody else wants to speak directly to that, that will be coming later. Anyone else? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, I mean.
Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment period. The consent agenda. Any amendments? Hold up. All right.
Madam Chair.
Sir.
One question. We still have a significant block of minutes that are missing.
Sure. We catching up on those minutes?
Yeah, just, we're saying, we're continuing with those recent, just, we're staying, we have, okay.
And we're backfilling with the older ones and catching up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I move we present the, approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Appointments to boards, commissions?
Yes, ma'am. By the end of November, the board will have to consider a new appointment for the library board, just to keep that in your mind over the next 30 days.
Okay, so for the audience or anyone watching, there will be an opening on our library board. If anyone would like to serve, please fill out an application. New business.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First item tonight is concerning our year-end fiscal year 21 financials. As we wrap up fiscal year 21, I'd like to present to the board an unaudited overview of what looks to be a great year financially. If you remember, when we did the forecast model, we anticipated a significant surplus for 2021 fiscal year 21, and our preliminary numbers indicate just that. Based on our latest indication, we are expecting a year-end surplus of 8.9 million. And we have provided a brief summary of the key components to that surplus in your board packet. Please note, the surplus generated in fiscal year 21, in fiscal year 21, was a component of the board's 10-year vision of operations, generating funds used to support the 79 cents tax rate and the 10-year CIP. A CIP which included $33 million in pay-as-you-go projects. We have with us tonight is Charlotte Schubert, our Director of Finance, who does a great job each year preparing the year-end audit. And she'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion on this particular item? All good? Okay, moving on. Item 10B.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to provide a few, do you an update on the new convenience center and ask for some help as it moves the project forward. We actually closed a 19-acre site parcel just west of South Creek a few weeks ago. Is there a plan to begin design work as soon as possible and develop a vision for the new convenience center, a future Carter-Geyer Boulevard extension and the property, on the property and commercially developed on the Anderson Highway half of the property? Mr. Shardad is here with us tonight to go over requested rezoning of the property. Mr. Shardad, please.
Good evening, board members. So as you're probably aware, the property is currently Zon C, general commercial, which being a transition district has relatively few uses, and convenience center is not one of them. So we need to rezone the property for our intended use. So we're recommending I-2 heavy industrial would give us the maximum flexibility on possible uses for our use, as well as marketing the remainder of the property in the future for other uses. For our portion, we need to divide off our piece for the convenience center. Currently, with the A-10 zoning, that's not possible. We need to have all one uniform zoning so that we can make that subdivision as well. So if that's agreeable to you, we will start the application on the board's behalf, take it around all the various agencies for review and comment, contact adjacent property owners, hold a community meeting so neighbors as well as larger community can give input on it, schedule a hearing for the public, the planning commission, schedule a public hearing, and ultimately bring it before you for public hearing as well, so that the usual zoning process that you're used to. And then the second piece for this tonight, in the draft comprehensive plan update, we showed the location of this project on our public facilities map. And speaking with the county attorney, he recommended we should have some... Speaking with the county attorney, he recommended we should have some more details actually describe that property on there. So later, when we get into the comp plan, we have some language suggested for you on that. If not, the project, we just need to do what's called a 2232 review, which any public facility has to be confirmed to be in accord with the comprehensive plan. So if it's not in the comp plan update, we just need to do that alongside the rezoning, which is essentially ensuring that any public facility we build is in accord with the comp plan. So that's that proposal for you tonight. Happy answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Shardine or Mr. Smither?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Sir.
Ms. Shardine. Your map up there shows, could we have that map back up, please? Shows Site 1, Site 2. So the area south of the convenience center, you're proposing to divide into two parcels?
Or we could market it as one. That's just showing how it could be divided into two. I don't think we would propose to divide it any more than that. So that would be kind of the maximum we would see it.
Why would we, in terms of, why would we show it as anything other than one parcel?
Yeah, and we would not be dividing that now. So this is just an example to show how it could be split.
What you're talking about is not dividing it now?
Correct. For now, just rezoning the property and dividing off the piece of top convenience center.
So you want to rezone the south portion to industrial, excuse me. What do you want for the comp plan to show for the south portion that's adjacent to 60?
Yeah, industrial.
Why wouldn't you want to have gateway business, which also includes the industrial categories that we felt were appropriate for Route 60? Plus other commercial areas. I mean, gateway business, we're talking about the comp plan now, not about rezoning. Okay, gateway business actually seems to me to give you more flexibility than just putting it in industrial.
Yeah, we could, since that does accommodate the industrial, we could go either way. And I think we had, we had looked at Commerce Center, Gateway, industrial. So either one of those would work for the use. I think we were going with the heavier one, just to maximize the potential options.
Because if we, if you use it, leave it as gateway business, then the only thing you have to change in the comp plan is to show the convenience center as a public. That would be the only thing you'd have to do. I don't know that we should, we should go to. Originally, I thought, did I, is this a change? Did I not see it was heavy industrial at one point? My plan was heavy industrial.
That's what I was just going to say, is that heavy industrial, and is that the reason why? Because gateway business may not encompass a heavy industrial.
Yeah, we felt that the industrial classification was closer to that.
Yeah.
Gateway business has, as you know, a major component of it in light industrial options. And so it also has other options in terms of flexibility with what could come in for the comp plan side of it, okay? It seemed to me that leaving it as gateway business would make the most sense. I feel to my peers.
As long as the gateway business encompasses the heavy industrial, because I think with our intent with gateway business was absolutely an industrial.
Light industrial.
Light industrial. So do you consider a convenience center or light industrial, heavy industrial? That's kind of the million dollar question.
This is not about, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is not about heavy industrial, is it? We basically want to do the entire 19 acres under the same zoning, which we thought, we thought heavy industrial would be more marketable on the front. So we needed light industrial on the back. So we figured make the entire 19 acres heavy industrial. Why, why would we want heavy industrial there?
I think it's a marketing play, just to keep our full, we think the doors are wider with the full of the heavy industrial than they are with the.
South Creek hadn't been able to sell anything that's heavy industrial. I mean, come on.
Well.
Would we create more?
Could be market.
Try to fix that. So we want to grow that business.
I would prefer it for the comp plan side that it stay gateway business. I don't see this being a heavy industrial world. That's, that's something we've never discussed, heavy industrial sitting right there on 60.
Mr. Byerly, Mr. Barry, Mr. Williams, any input? Yes, sir.
What is the zoning with classic granite today?
It's industrial. It's commerce in the front, industrial in the back. Commerce center in the front, industrial in the back. Am I correct? Yeah.
Light industrial, is it not?
I don't know.
Only in the only comprehensive plan on zoning, okay, in zoning, we have light industrial and heavy industrial.
Right.
Comprehensive plan, we just have industrial. That the actual, the actual zoning of that, I believe, is Commerce Center and.
And light industrial, correct. So for the cop plan, it does not delineate light versus industrial.
Correct.
Yeah.
And as Madam Chair, as owners, members of board of the property, we can proffer certain conditions that we want to go with the property forever. You know, as far as buffers and things that we want on 60 to protect us. If we did have a heavy industrial user come in, and how would we buffer that from 60? As initial owners of the property, we anticipate proffering certain conditions that would be a long-term vision for us.
If they feel in the comp plan that that would be more marketable, I would be willing to support that. If on the flip side, we've had RC Commerce Center all up and down 60, and we haven't exactly had a lot of takers on that either, so.
Let me follow up if I may, Madam Chair. Since we're talking tonight about the comp plan and we have one designation for heavy industrial and light industrial.
Not in the comp plan.
We don't on the, on the land use designation.
Strictly, it's just industrial.
Okay. No, that's what I said, you know, just for industrial. It's what you were saying for land use designation and comprehensive on the future land use map.
Yeah, it's just industrial, it's not light and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why wouldn't we leave it like that? Advertising, you know, because the comp plan does advertise on the future land use map, you know, what we're looking for in that area. Doesn't that give us more flexibility leaving it industrial if we designated it in the future land use map industrial? You see where I'm going?
That, yes, that's what he's thinking, correct, Mr. Smither?
No, I think he was going to go ahead and rezone it heavy industrial is what I heard.
We were taking that step right now.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you don't have to take that step. What you can do is advertise to the world through your future land use plan, through your designation of industrial, and that gives you the flexibility. When you do have somebody that expresses an interest, then you can do the rezoning to either or.
Right, there's only one, if you want to make it marketable, I would think marketability wise, you'd be better if it was already rezoned. Anybody's going to always want to, a business is going to want to come in where something is rezoned and not to have to go through a rezoning, in my opinion. I don't think they're going to want to have to go through a rezoning.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Not when we own it. When we own the property, the county owns the property and tells an applicant, we will get it rezoned for you. That changes everything. This is not a third party.
I don't know, that might scare them even more when they hear that we own it.
The fact that we own it and we can, we can change the zoning anytime we want. Sure. We get the count, the county can. Is that correct, Mr. Blackney?
We can change the zoning anytime we want, but I would advise against making it part of a negotiating deal. Because you're going to theoretically, somebody's going to claim that's a, in essence, a spot zoning, because the one thing a spot zoning is, is you give somebody a break that you wouldn't give anybody else. And so in a situation where somebody's buying our parcel, and so we tell them in advance, we'll rezon you, we wouldn't do that for anyone else.
Okay.
So I wouldn't advise that we would do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Lackney, if, if in fact, we rezone it and it comports with a comprehensive plan, then we have not done anything that is out of sort, is that correct?
If it matches a comprehensive plan, we probably can defend our position. It doesn't prevent somebody from suing us, but I think we have a defensible position.
So if it, if it shows industrial on a comprehensive plan and we don't rezone it until we have the kind of client that we want. We have, what's the problem?
And for the record, I mean, everybody may know this, but in case somebody on the board doesn't know this, we don't have to rezone. We're not subject to the zoning ordinance. So there's nothing that legally requires us to rezone this to industrial use in order to put a convenience center there.
It's just a front piece that requires it.
Right, the piece we want to market would have to be rezoned for whatever that user has, but technically the county does not have to rezone its portion.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Where I'm at is I would prefer to defer to our staff and economic development as to the feasibility, what they feel would be most marketable. That's, that's where I'm at. And I, Ms. Shardine, if you want to weigh in on that, if, I don't know if you and Roxanne have discussed or.
Yeah, I mean, certainly I2 gives us more options. And we can always through proffers or deed restrictions, you know, lower that. There's, there's many things in I2 that the county and staff wouldn't propose their support there. So if we want to, you know, leave some of those less intense uses that are in I2 in there for ourselves, we can. We could also proffer out that we're not going to do some of these things to make it kind of more of an in-between I1 and I2. But if we're talking pure marketability and maximum number of uses that we could potentially do there, then, then yes, I2 is going to have more.
Okay.
For the convenience center, we could use a number of zoning districts, I think CC, I1, I2, any of those would accomplish the convenience center portion, but more future marketability of the remaining acreage.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Ms. Shardine, what do you want to do with the southern piece? But what do you want of the question that Mrs. Carmack, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Staff had proposed I2.
Which is?
Rezoning I2 heavy industrial.
He wants the I2 heavy industrial. That's what staff wants.
So from the comprehensive plan is industrial.
Yeah.
And then you then plan to ask us to rezone it.
A month later. December.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brett, go back to, you know, what you said about we can put in proffered conditions to control what comes in there. But by going with I2, that's a different designation from light and light industrial. Would we not by putting in those proper conditions and not being able to include those options under light industrial? Aren't we limiting ourselves? That's my first question. My second question is, what have we seen come into the county here of late? What are we seeing? Are we, are we seeing heavy industrial or are we seeing light industrial?
Yeah, so to the first question, certainly if we proffer, we're not going to do things, we're limiting ourselves. But I think if we look through the list of uses, there's some things that we would never probably propose to do there. So I think we could give some assurance to the public, some of the adjacent property owners of things that will never happen there. So I wouldn't be concerned if we want to proffer some things.
But my question, if I may, Madam Chair, following up is you're proffering out things that you are saying would be egregious. What we said would never come there. But you're also, by going to the designation, losing out on those things that would be included under light industrial, are you not?
No, so the heavy includes all of the light industrial.
Oh, is that heavy does include all the light industrial?
Correct.
All right, well, I feel better.
Okay, so what do we do from here? Mr. Byerly, I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
Well, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I raised my hand a couple of times and I said, well, I'll just sit here and let everybody finish with this. I think that, you know, what Mr. Shardine is suggesting, if I'm understanding him right, by going to heavy industrial. I mean, it sort of gives us the best of both worlds with the I2 or light industrial. And I do think that when people come into the county that want to do business, the problem that we have is the rezoning. And if we rezone this upfront, I believe it makes it much more marketable from a standpoint of nobody has to go through, let's say, jumping through all the hoops if they're an industrial customer wanting to put industrial business in that or in either one of those parcels. I think also, basic marketing tells you when it comes to real estate, it's location, location, location. And I think that location is not, no disrespect to the South Creek people, but I think that's a pretty good location on Route 60. And then the next thing I would say, having been in the sales field, if something doesn't sell for a long time, I got a really good idea, it has to do with the price. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. What do we do from here, Mr. Smither?
We just need an indication whether you want to take it to the planning commission to put it up.
Yeah, just a motion to initiate a request to the planning commission to begin the rezoning process.
I move that we engage the planning commission to look at the rezoning process. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Ted C., Mr. Smither?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The 10-year CIP included a variety of projects, including in addition to fire company number one. Both fire and public works staff have begun to began the A and E solicitation process consistent with Virginia Public Procurement Act. And we're hopeful that we could, we are hopefully could present it tonight, the recommended architectural firm. But we're still actively working with the three vendors that we interviewed to determine who will be recommended to the board. My goal tonight is simply to determine if the board is still excited about the project and would like us to keep moving forward. If so, we will have a formal recommendation of the A and E firm to you at your November meeting. I have Chief Warner here tonight, if you have any questions about the facility itself.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm confused. Why wouldn't we be excited?
I think you are, but.
This is one of the great, we've been trying to get this launched for so long.
I agree.
Any, any other comments? Mr. Byerly, all set? Okay.
We'll be back to you in November with a contract award.
All right, 10D, redistricting.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board, over the past 30 days, staff has been receiving census data from the 2022, 2020 census, updating our redistricting software and preparing data for your review. No decisions need to be made tonight. Again, I'll say it again, no decisions need to be made tonight. But we thought it would be helpful for you and for our citizens to get an update on our progress to date. Brett Shardine is here to write some additional data. Brett, thank you.
Yep, thank you again. And as Holly gets me up here on screen, if I can go ahead and begin. So with the latest 2020 census, we've gotten our population counts in. One requirement is all voting districts must be within 5% of one another. So our largest district, most populated district, and our least populated district all must be within 5% of one another. Because of growth in the county, all the districts grew, but some grew faster than others. As well as a change in how Virginia's counting our prisoner population, we have several prisons in the county. That's meant that the population has gotten out of line between districts, so it requires us to redistrict, readjust some lines. So first, some background on it, you know, when we talk about redistricting, redrawing lines, it's kind of a misnomer. We don't get total flexibility in where we control those lines. The census will only allow us to work with census blocks, which are predetermined areas. They're typically drawn around major landmarks, roads, streams, power lines, things like that. So in this top picture there, you can see the green outlines are census blocks. So if we want to adjust the lines between two districts, again, we can't just draw a line where we want it. We have to choose which of these census blocks are in and out of the district. So it's just one limitation of how we can adjust these. So with our latest census counts, if we didn't adjust anything, this is where the populations would be. You can see District 1 with the growth there is now our largest district. And District 3 would be our smallest district. It grew not quite as fast as 1 and then lost some population because of how prisons are counted. So nationally, the census counts prisoners where they're located in their prisons, and that's how we've historically been counted here. Virginia, along with a few other states, decided to do it differently and to count prisoners at their home address as given. So in theory, you've probably heard that Virginia won't count prisoners in their prisons. In reality, because of other errors with prison reporting, maybe because the prisoners are from out of state, maybe they don't have a home address. In those cases, they still report them at the prison. So while Virginia said we're not counting prisoners in prisons, in reality, across the state, about 30%, we're told of all prisoners are still reported in their facilities. But because of losing about 70% of that, you can see District 3 with the prison facility there lost a large percentage of their population. So that means we need to adjust all of these districts to get them within 5% of one another. We have a draft revised map. I'll show you kind of staff's proposal of how it could be drawn. You know, there's a couple of different ways we could do it, and we'll invite the public's feedback on this map to see. But the way we've redrawn it there, you can see all the districts are within 5% of one another in accord with the census requirements. And this is an image of that draft map. Live here. Sorry, need to change which screen I'm sharing.
Brett, this is, I'll show the board and the citizens, based on the numbers you showed us in a previous chart, they this is the basis of those numbers. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. See how to share a different screen.
When do we need to formally mo- move on this in November?
I think November meeting would be a good timing for us.
Okay.
If it gives the board enough time to go over the details here, we'll provide you with, I think, we got the big maps already to help you with the details, and we'll get back with you during, over the next twenty days before the next board meeting.
So here you can see the red lines are the current districts as drawn today. The triangles are polling stations, and then the red dots are both yourselves or the supervisor members, school board members. And then because we have an election coming up in District two, we also have both of the applicants there as well, or both of the candidates there as well, because we can't redraw a line to push somebody outside of their district. So we had to be aware of those locations. Then the draft map is colored section here. So this complies with getting each district within five percent of one another. Keeps all of the current or potential future members on our elected boards within their districts. It would see one precinct, St. Luke's there, go out of its district, but you're allowed to have a precinct out of a district if it's within one mile of the border. In this case, it's within less than a hundred feet of a border, so that could continue as a District one precinct if we so desire. But to highlight what the changes were here between District two and three, if if the board does choose to go with this option, you can see there's one census block here. We needed to move some population from District three to District two to balance that out. I'm going to zoom in a little more. You can see.
You mean four to two, correct?
Four to two.
District four to two, that was forty-four people.
Yeah, so you can see these are, when I said we can't draw lines from scratch, we have to work with existing blocks that are given. So you can see the minimal change we could make was choosing that one census block right there and moving it across districts, which was enough population to get us within the five percent. And between District one and three, you can see formerly, all of this area was part of District one, but because of District one growing more quickly than three, we needed to move some of the population there to balance it out. So avoiding major subdivisions and things like that as much as possible going along either roadways or waterways. This would now, i- if we go with this map, be part of District three. And then the last piece, I mentioned the prison populations. You can see we have State Farm Prison Facility is located across two districts, which is somewhat unique. Typically, you would think they would be all within one voting district. But this one with the multiple buildings and kind of campus style spread around was across both District five and District three. So in talking with census staff about that, they said, really, you want to have those prison facilities because of the way they're counted, all in one district or the other. We ran scenarios to see about including the entire prison in District three, so making this all District three. Or the one you see here would have it all in District five. Doing it all in District three had had so many impacts, it would be kind of a domino effect where we would have to adjust the line so much. It would be a big change, big change across all of the district lines. Moving it all to District five, on the other hand, required only one other small change to offset the population.
Ma'am Chair, may I ask a question right now?
Yes, sir.
Cause major problems. We kept it all in three versus five. Can you go into a little bit more detail about that?
Yep, and again, it's it's due to the the unique nature of having a prison facility straddling two voting districts. And then even more unique than that.
I understand the purpose of doing it, you know, as you explained, as we talked about, you know, on Thursday.
Yep.
Of having it all in one district. And right now, part of the prisons in District five and parts in District three.
Correct.
So the decision was, what district do you combine?
Yep.
The two census tracts in. Is it three or is it going to be five? And you said, going, I said, I think you said going to five
Correct.
represents less of a systemic effect
Yep.
on the other lines in the count.
Yep.
Can you go into detail?
Yes, you would think if it's straddling both, you could go one way or the other, and it'd probably be similar. But again, it's kind of, Virginia is unique amongst just a few states and how they're doing this. So to adjust the prison population, when I said before that they don't want to count prisoners at the facility, the ones here, you can see this is why we have a negative population in this district. That would mean that the prison was able to count two hundred and two prisoners that had addresses elsewhere outside of Powhatan that they could locate them and for census purposes, move them out of the county. So all of the prison population loss is here in District three. All of the prisoners that are still being counted are here in five. So it's not like it's it's even across both. You have one district taking all of the lost prisoners, one district keeping all the prisoners. So that's why one change would have more of an impact than the other.
So is there the wash?
If we have them all in one district, then it's essentially a wash, yeah. If we have them across districts, then one gets a benefit, one gets a detriment. But if we get them in one district, then then it's a wash. And that's what census is saying in every other instance they've seen, it's all in one district. So it doesn't really matter. They hadn't seen the situation where you have one single prison facility across two voting districts.
If I may, ma'am chair.
Sir.
Brett, I always thought, you know, you and I had this discussion that in actuality, District five was the smallest district in terms of actual people voting. How many more votes are, is District five getting now?
So in this proposed scenario, it would be, I can show you exactly. So you can see here, District five would be, so the column see total there, five thousand seven hundred ninety-four persons compared to the the largest district being District four would be six thousand six hundred and sixty-seven. See the the population of the other districts. So it would still be the smallest district, but by about four percent from the largest.
How many more votes is she getting today, total?
As compared to today.
What was that? What was her increase that she's getting? I think it's just coming from District three.
Correct, yeah, the only, the only change would be pulling population from District three. Yes, current population of the districts. Well, this is if we would not, if we don't redraw them, it would be fifty-eight hundred. That's not the current one today.
But with you putting all the prisoners in my district, in District five, they don't vote.
Correct.
So that's why I still have to pick up that other little area, that little chunk, right?
Yep, that's why we're proposing this little area here.
Madam Chair, so it's a non-voting head count.
Exactly, it's not like it's a
Yeah, so this two, two census blocks here, west of five twenty-two, those would need to become part of District five to to balance out that population.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I was looking to say. If you just look at the landmass, the kingdom of Carmack covers just about the whole county.
Yep, yep, but that's that's total population, it's it's quite similar, yeah. But so this is, this is one way it could be drawn, again, just kind of zooming in to show you the census blocks we have to work with because that's the only block we have to use to build these. There's, there's actually not that many options because once you add some of these populations, it gets us in or out of that five percent threshold.
One last question. How many do we have to give up in District one?
The total number in District one, to get within that, I don't recall, it was seven hundred, I want to say, it was.
Seven hundred something.
Yeah, yeah, it was overpopulated by seven hundred.
I need that number because when I go home, you know, tomorrow and start going through the map and looking at the census tracts, I want to know what that number is so that I can make any changes working towards that number that, you know, I might want to make.
It's in your PowerPoint, Brett.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what we're just asking of you tonight, if if generally, you know, understanding you and the public need more time to evaluate this, conceptually, this looks like a good first draft, we'll put this on the website, publish it, start to solicit public feedback. And then we can bring it back to you at your next meeting, where we would need to go from here. If the board makes a recommendation to the Attorney General's Office on the draft redistricting map, the Attorney General's Office has sixty days to review it and take issue with it. If they don't, then following that sixty day period, or if they approve it sooner than that, you need to hold a public hearing and then officially approve this under an ordinance. So it'll be, I emphasize, there'll be several more opportunities for public feedback on this. And once we put it up on the website, if anybody has questions or, you know, they want to see how a line could potentially be drawn, we would be glad to look at that and, you know, try different scenarios. But we've run a bunch of them, a lot of them don't work or have other issues, so we think this is at least a good first draft.
Thank you. Mr. Byerly, any comments?
No, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Carmack, I mean, Madam Chair. This whole thing with the redistricting group, where they're at an impasse, just to give you a heads up, you know, the timelines might be pushed back. Let me explain. Over in Gushland County, they've been told they can't have split precincts. Okay, they have more than one delegate representing Gushland. And so they're waiting for the redistricting so that they can do their districting at the supervisory level because, again, they can't have split precincts. So I, I don't know where it's going to go and how much time it's going to, I know where it goes if they can't do their job. But this is going to be problematic, that one issue for any number of counties. Second thing, in discussions with one of our members on the electoral board, there was in the discussions, cutting off five twenty-two west and moving that to another delegate or to another district. So again, that could throw a wrench in their plans. If that does happen, we may have to go back again and make changes. So I just bring that call for informational purposes.
Thank you.
I was going to, the question was asked, technically, legally, by state law, we have to be done before December thirty-first.
Okay.
Having said that, that is impossible to do, and and the the penalty for not doing it, it doesn't really exist. There is no penalty. I just didn't want anybody to, somebody goes, well, you're violating the law, you haven't done it by December thirty-first. Technically, by state law, we're supposed to be finished by December thirty-first. Having said that, Mr. Williams has pointed out potential problems. We didn't get the census numbers from the federal government until September, then the state massaged them. I mean, it's, it isn't realistic that we are able to do this by December thirty-first, because we would technically have to have this in the hands of the Attorney General by November first.
Right.
And, but just in case one of your citizens throws it at you, oh, y'all aren't keeping the law, yeah, we know we're not. We, we don't have any way to comply with the law, just how late we received the numbers and all of the the balls that are up in the air. But I did want everybody, you know, in case one of your constituents asks you about it, it is technically due by the end of the year.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business.
Yes, ma'am chair. In la- in last month's meeting, the board decided to defer action on Resolution two thousand twenty-one forty-three to appropriate funds for the school boards as our three funding. Tonight, we brought it back to you with any questions you may have on that topic, and if not, like to move forward with that appropriation.
Okay, any discussion, comments?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
We focused on what the money was going to be spent for. That was the discussion, you know. The chairman and I discussed that, you know, the other day. We didn't know about any of the other requirements that might go along with accepting the grant. So I have a number of questions. Are there other requirements that go along with accepting the money? My second question would be, who signs off on accepting this? We've already gone through phase one and two. Have the schools signed off on it? Are they the executing power in this? Did they agree to it, or do we have to agree to it? So I I would like to know that information. Are we locked into doing other things? And by accepting the monies that we've accepted to date, are we already locked in to whatever these other requirements, these other hooks that are in the money coming to the county? Ned, do you have any insight on that?
No, I mean, I I do have some insight. Also have Dr. Jones and Mr. Johns online, if you, if you want to ask the questions, track them. But to my knowledge, the school board made the application already, so that was an action they could take at the school board level for the, for the funds. And sure of that, I don't have any more detail. We have not done any research, very little research based on the information you received today as far as any CDC guidance restrictions thereof.
I heard from an individual tonight at at public comment that there was going to be some mandate for masks going through two thousand twenty-three. Whether or not, you know, CDC changed their regulations or not, I might have heard incorrectly, but
Yeah.
I I would like to know what, if there are additional requirements to go along with accepting the money, what are they? And then, the second point is, what is our role in moving the money over to the schools? In other words, or, you know, we are, we are appropriating this money that's coming from the federal government.
Correct.
All right. If we, if we decide we, whatever reason, we didn't want to do that, what would happen? Or can we even do that? Or is this just a pro forma?
Well, the list of items that were provided to you as far as items, they were planning on spending their money, they've got a budget for that, all their money, including the million.
Yeah, but what is, I'm not, I'm not worried about the what right now. What I'm, what I'm interested in is any additional hooks that go along with accepting the money, as we heard from some folks tonight, because we haven't even talked about that.
And I don't think it's a topic amongst school boards in Virginia, but the Dr. Jones is much more connected to that environment as far as any restrictions or guidance or to tell us we have to spend the money in a certain way.
Or if we take the money that, you know, there's going to be, like the gentleman said tonight, a mask mandate for a certain period of time. Or following CDC regulations as whatever they come down with.
Yeah.
And and do we have any say so in this? I mean, again, is this something where we're just handing over to them?
Mr. Smith, we we have the money, correct?
Sure, have we received the cash at this point?
Is our, like, can you hear now? Oh, he can't hear you.
These grants are are awarded, but it's on a reimbursement basis. So we don't get any of the money back until we spend it. So it's not like our federal money that we got from ARPA, which we actually got
Right.
in advance, and then we have to report back what we spend it on, which has all kinds of restrictions on that too.
Okay.
No, theirs is a reimbursement basis.
So my question is, have they spent some of the money at this point? I guess where I'm going with all this, if they've spent the money, I mean, are we a little, you know, are we a little late in wondering what the requirements are for for using the money? That that's where I'm.
I think that, I hope you can hear me now. I think we we do have numerous topics that we're allowed to spend the money on. I know Dr. Jones and Mr. Johns have focused their spending on areas that are permitted.
Okay.
The question is, is what's attached? I think we're hearing tonight, what's attached to those numbers, and is there?
Is there.
So I'm sure that.
Can they speak to that? Can they?
Sure, Dr. Jones, if you don't mind, if you could help us get through that concept.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon or good evening, everybody. The two requirements are that we follow CDC guidance to the extent possible. That's what's in the language of the grant application that we have seen and and applied for. And that we spend at least twenty percent of the allocated funds on unfinished learning or allowing students to catch up from when they had missed school previously during the close. students to catch up from when they had missed school previously during the closure of spring of 2020 or last year for those school districts that didn't go back full time at the elementary level or at the secondary level like we did in a hybrid level or a hybrid model for the remainder of the year. So I've sat through and staff has sat through many, many webinars on this over the last few months. I have not heard from anybody that there's a mask mandate. As far as I know, there are school divisions across the country where there isn't a mask mandate in their state that have received AR and are using ARP funds. So I don't know where that's coming from and it's certainly not anything that we have heard. The language of the following CDC guidance to the extent possible is one that's been around since the pandemic started. We were prepared to go with optional masks this summer, announce that to the community. And the reason that we changed was not because of CDC guidance, but because of the Health Commissioner's order that came through and carries the weight of law. So as far as we know, from the numerous conversations that we've had with state officials and with our professional organizations, there's nothing that would require us other than what I just shared about 20% and following CDC guidance to the extent possible. And we have, and to answer an earlier question, if I may, Madam Chair, the, and I think a previous, one of the public input speakers mentioned, this was a very rushed timeline. We didn't have a lot of time to go through this. We did have a committee that the school board formed of community members. We did follow and post information related to it on our website. But the application deadline was very early before the school year started. So the application has been submitted. It has been approved at the state level. And so that process has, as you said, kind of already taken place.
Thank, any other questions for Dr. Jones? Okay.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
So the board of supervisors, we didn't make or apply for the grant. The schools filed for the grant. Y'all made the decision. Y'all were granted the grant. So we really don't have a role here other than providing the money over to the school as it's expended according to the plan that y'all put in place.
I think that is correct, Mr. Williams. This would be just like any other state funding and grant funding that it comes to the county and then the county appropriates it to the school division.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Mr. Byerly, Mr. Cox, Mr. Berry, any questions?
Dr. Jones. I'm sorry, I'm just related to Riley.
If Dr. Jones would come back in, I've got a question. In looking at the sheet that we got from the schools in regards to how you're distributing these funds, it's almost kind of looks like an expense budget of, you know, you've got $2,505,000 in this grant. And then you've dispersed how you can spend it, which some is on. My question is to you, Dr. Jones, has the school board approved this? Or did they review it? And have they voted on it?
The school board has reviewed it. They've received the same information that you're looking at. We had a topic of ARP and these grant funds on the agenda on several occasions. So it was discussed. The school board shared what their priorities were. One of those was reducing class size so that there would be smaller classes so teachers could give more individual attention to students. So they have certainly had an opportunity to give input, have reviewed everything prior to us submitting the application.
Did they vote on it?
Did they vote on the application itself? No, they did not.
Did they vote on how you're choosing to spend the $2,505,000?
No, they gave input on it and reviewed how we were spending it and our plan for submitting it prior to the application that went forward.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Anyone, anyone else?
No question. Dr. Jones, Ned Smith, appreciate, follow up to Mr. Williams' question, make sure we got to understand what you said. It isn't a reimbursement grant. So you do need appropriation ahead of the reimbursement, right? For you to spend the money to get reimbursed for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you you were breaking up. I didn't catch the first part of that.
The question is, Mr. Williams' question is, when does the money come in? You know, would you actually need us to appropriate it so you can spend it so you can then be reimbursed since it is reimbursement grant?
Correct. This is a reimbursement grant. So we spend it and then get reimbursement from the state, which I think has the flow through money from the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
So what, what do we do here? Do we make a roll call?
Madam Chair, I believe, I believe you do.
Okay.
But Madam Chair, if I could make one statement, make sure that, you know, in summary, the school board didn't actually vote on submitting the application. Is that correct? And the school board didn't vote on the plan for how the monies were going to be spent. They only reviewed it. Is that correct? Is that our understanding?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. A second. On Resolution R2021-43. Do we have any questions or comments on the motion? Do a roll call, please.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Berry.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Mr. Byerly.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi. Moving on to our public hearings, first one of the evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins will be helping us with Ordinance 0-2021-26, Bellmead on the James. Good evening, Mr. Hop.
Good evening. This is COP at 4747 Cosby Road. Bellmead is the James is the applicant. It's about 56 acres. It's for a community center. There's a existing historic structure on the lot that is a 2,000 square foot home that they intend to convert into this community center. The remainder of the lot will be turned into a walking trail. And that will be put into a conservation easement. There are a number of conditions on this application, probably most pertinent that usually ask questions about. We'll have a single VDOT entrance and we'll have a
Commercial entrance.
Not a commercial entrance, I think about the sewage. Septic system for a community center as part of the CP application. I was like, it's not sewer. It's got a 50, I'm sorry, yeah, 50 voted planning commission before to was recommending approval. I'm here to take questions. The applicant is here to take questions and their representative is also is here.
Would the applicant care to make a statement?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Smithers, my name is Chris Shust. I'm here representing the applicant. Excuse me, applicant Bellmead on the James tonight. We have representatives of the Board of Directors and the executive director of the Drexel Morale Center, Sister Maureen Carroll and Dr. Venable. Dr. Demetrius Venable, excuse me. They will be occupying the facility and running the facility. This 56 acres is on a diagonal to Bellmead. The sisters, when they sold Bellmead, had the opportunity to make an investment on the property and chose to do so to pursue the opportunity to preserve the legacy of Bellmead. It's also a couple other endeavors through the Drexel Morale Center that they will run through here. They will have small meetings and conferences. The several grants have been given to the Drexel Morale Center for some of the improvements. And they do plan to develop and construct a series of walking trails through the property. The property is the majority heavily wooded. Would you mind pulling up that image? And it, the intent here is to maintain that. What we are trying to do is help them come into compliance in the facility with some ADA improvements to provide access to the existing home building that's going to be converted for use. And then with the trail, we also want to provide some parking so that those trails can be used. And that, that parking will serve as a little bit of overflow parking in addition to, for the building. And then in addition to being used for people, those wishing to access the walking trail. The current driveway serving the, the original home site called Rosemont is up there at number one on the image that we've put up. It doesn't have adequate corner clearance. It does not have adequate site distance. And honestly, it's kind of dangerous. So as part of this project, we are going to relocate that to the location shown up there's number three. That provides county and VDOT required separation, exit for access management purposes. It also provides site distance that's needed. And then you will come in at the location number three. And from there, you'll be able to go to number four, which would be the parking lot to serve the walking trails. The green dash line is a depiction. We haven't figured out the exact routing of those trails. The, the point here is going to be that the, it'll be walked so that we can preserve as much as we can. There's no desire here to take down trees unless it's absolutely necessary. And then we probably will still work to figure something out. And then the pink box number two is the home site and just below to the right of that is a, an accessory barn. Both of those have historic designation. And both of those are being preserved and there is an intent to improve, not to change, but to restore. Unless it's for ADA accessibility purposes. I'm, I'm excited because this is one of those rare opportunities where I can ask people in the audience to show by wave of the hand who they are and they're here to support this project. This is a great project for the community. We had a community meeting and we had great support and attendance at that meeting. Over 30 people attended at Greenbrier Baptist Church. We had good conversation. We had some legitimate questions that were asked. And we were able to provide just the overall background on what this project was intended to be and what the site wants to be long term. And if I could indulge, I'd like to just have some people raise a hand to show you the support here tonight. With those of you that are here to support this project, we have members from Little Zion Church, Mount Zion Church, Greenbrier Church that are also here. We have residents in the vicinity on Maidens Road, on Cartersville Road. President of Drexel Morale, Mr. Venable, Dr. Venable is also a resident, an immediate adjacent. So would you all mind putting your hands up for a second? This is exciting to me because I've come to you before and usually it's the people lining up that don't want to support it. So I wanted to take that opportunity. This is a, a project that Mr. Cox is preserving. The conservation strip running through the middle of the property. There's, Lake Creek runs through the property. So we are maintaining compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff supported that. This is a truly community centered project and it is a volunteer run project and Drexel Morale is trying to do some really good work in the community. So I am available to ask any questions of you if you have any. Otherwise, I would just request here, positive vote on this project tonight as being a great addition to the community and to Powhatan County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We'll now have the public hearing on this conditional use permit. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Stevie Barham, 3492, Richard Trump. Anything we can do to preserve this left of Bellmead, please do. And I have very fond memories up there through the years and anything we can do to preserve that. Mother Drexel's honor and just a, just a facility. It's, it's a very amazing thing. So I'm pretty sure y'all probably will. I was asking y'all, please do vote for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, ma'am.
Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Do you all have any questions of staff? I move, we approve ordinance 02021-26.
Sergeant.
Any questions or comments on the motion? I just want to thank you. This is a fantastic project and I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition. Now we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Berry.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Mr. Byerly.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda.
Madam Chairman, ordinance 0-2021-27 is for the adoption of the 2021 Long Range Comprehensive Plans, a public hearing. Mr. Hopkins is here with us.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins?
As you are all well aware, this is the culmination of a lot of work over a long period of time. Just going to highlight some of the things that are big changes for the comp plan. Number one, incorporating the strategic plan goals into the comprehensive plan, one of the big ones. The economic development chapter highlighting rural residential and rural preservation. I'm sorry, agricultural land and businesses were highlighted. In the future land use map, there are a number of changes, mainly the elimination of the rural residential areas and replacement in rural preservation for that portion of the map. We have had nine planning commission meetings by my count and nine board supervisor workshops with this being the 10th. And then there's also been two public hearing workshops this, earlier this month. In time since our last meeting, which was the 29th of September, have been some small changes based on a lot of feedback and getting kind of in between. One of the main ones was adding convenience center to the comprehensive plan map for the industrial use as far as future land use maps concerned. And also denoting as a public facility, both important steps to avoid having to come back for a planning commission review for that. There was also some transportation projects specifically for 7-Eleven that were included on the infrastructure map and those are in the draft as well. That portion does have to be reviewed by VDOT and that has not happened yet. So whatever happens tonight with this. We have to talk to Tom, I think, maybe about whether you can approve the entire thing or not, or if you want to defer simply based on that, it's up to you. But certainly that is a portion of this that still has to be reviewed by VDOT. There was the addition of manufactured housing in the housing section as that was made. Just to mention that we have it, it is available in A10 and A12 by right. A10 is the most common zoning district in this county. So manufactured housing is, is available and also required by state law and is in there. I will take questions if you have any, we have the draft on hand.
Let's go ahead and have the public hearing on this first and then we'll, you know, so we'll now have the public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan.
Good evening, David Anderson, 2366, Bell, Chris Circle in Powhatan. I'd like to make a few observations about the September 29th workshop concerning the comprehensive plan and specifically the decisions about economic opportunity, land use in the route 7-Eleven village area. I've been attending these board meetings and workshops for the last four years. And the September 29th workshop yielded the oddest, oddest decisions I've ever witnessed. The workshop was communicated as the final review of the comp plan before presenting the plan to the public. And the advertised agenda stated, quote, "Review updates to the entire comprehensive plan," end quote. In reality, the workshop turned out to be not simply a review of previous work and minor editing, but a complete overhaul of economic opportunity. Furthermore, much of that significant overhaul did not result from thoughtful and persuasive debate, but from the thoughts of a single supervisor. But from the thoughts of a single supervisor. That was odd. On September twenty-ninth, a single supervisor stated that new information had come to light. Yet no new information was presented at the workshop. That was odd. On September twenty-ninth, a single supervisor said they missed something from prior economic development conversations. Fair enough, we can all miss something. Yet what he missed, none of the other supervisors acknowledged that they missed as well. However, the board proceeded down the path to upend economic development. That was odd. On September twenty-ninth, a single supervisor referenced. Referenced a particular landowner's parcel or parcels of land needing, quote, "maximum flexibility," end quote. During numerous planning commission and board of supervisor meetings on the comp plan. Mr. Lashley has repeatedly stated that you should not be thinking of how a single parcel or set of parcels would be affected by the comp plan. But you did. That was odd. In the comprehensive plan, economic opportunity land use is defined as an area where there is an opportunity. To create, quote, "commercial and light industrial uses with complementary residential uses," end quote. Prior to the September twenty-ninth meeting, economic opportunity required a minimum of seventy percent commercial use. And a maximum of thirty percent residential use. Hence the word complementary for residential. Yet by the end of the meeting, there was no residential maximum. Thus residential, the residential component in an economic opportunity zone along the route seven-eleven area. Could be one hundred percent residential. How that can be viewed as complementary was odd. Furthermore, to say that one hundred percent residential use.
Sorry, I have to.
That was three minutes.
Yeah, that was three minutes, sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Know y'all get tired of hearing me tonight, but this may reason I came. Stevie Baron, thirty-four ninety-two, Richard's Run. First, I want to thank Mr. Perry for his stepping forward to represent District Two. I do have to say something that Norman don't say. Me, me and Mr. Birch agree on something. And that is eight days now we got an election get ready to happen. And people of District Two are going to vote and decide who's going to represent them. Mr. Perry has done a wonderful job. I appreciate everything he's done. But they will be the people voting who are going to decide whether they agree with what's done with this comprehensive plan. Or they disagree. And then another year or two, thanks, two thousand twenty-three, we have an election. They will decide whether they agree with what that representative did. So I ask this board to please wait after this election to have this happen. Now. If y'all do not, I do have this to say. I was talking about economic development thing. This thirty percent housing. My understanding is two parcels mainly involved. One's up in Dorset and sixty, right across the sheets. The other one is that Page wrote. Now everyone on this board that was elected, this last election. Ran on no multifamily housing units. Let me repeat that. No multifamily housing units. Now, some people say, well, that's just apartments. Four units per acre, whether it be townhouses. Duplexed, quadplexes, whatever you call it, is multifamily housing. This county has spoken. Very famous day, February twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, they didn't want it. They still don't want it. They may not be here tonight because they don't even know what's going on. After it happens, you will have an uproar from this county. So I ask y'all to please. Think before y'all vote for this. Because I hear people say, well, there's no affordable housing in this county. There's no two hundred thousand dollar housing in this county. There's plenty. I get sick and tired of hearing that. There's affordable housing. We may not be able to live where we want to live every time. I had to wait till I was fifty-some years old, build for the house like I said that I'm really proud of. I had to crawl. Walk, run. What's wrong with people doing that? Doing the same thing nowadays. We've got plenty of housing in this county. But the main thing people in this county want, and they come here, if they come here is for rural living. It's very simple. We're not here RICO, Chesterfield, Hanover, Richmond. We don't want to be that. If you want that, you can go a few miles down the road and have all the apartments, all the multi-housing you want. So please think before you vote. Please put off the vote. But if you do vote, think. Because people are not going to be happy and they'll be back. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Kristy Elliott, thirty-four seventy-one Anderson Highway. I'm going to agree with Mr. Barham. I think this vote on the comprehensive plan should be deferred. I think Mr. Barry's done a great job. He was appointed, not elected. And we do have an election coming up and the whoever may get your seat. Will have to deal with the comprehensive plan that will be voted on tonight if you choose to do that and not defer it. As far as rural preservation, not only is that going to be gone in rural areas, but rural residential too. Rural residential five will be gone. And those will all be rural areas, which are a ten acre minimum. So for affordable housing, you're going to have to buy ten acres to put your house on. So hope y'all will approve those tiny houses when they come up. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone on Zoom?
You have to, on Zoom, we raise our hand. First is Miss Debbie Weir.
Okay.
Miss Weir, if you could go ahead, please. You're now on mute. There you go.
Hi, my name is Debbie Weir and for over forty-two years, my husband and I have lived at fifteen oh one Page Road. I was pleased to see that a large portion of the residential area on Page Road is no longer in the Route sixty corridor east special area. And that our High Hill subdivision is now one future use designation instead of three. The major issue that I continue to have with this comprehensive plan is that there continues to be. Multiple small parcels being designated gateway business on both ends of Page Road. And both ends of Page Road continue to be in the Route sixty corridor east special area. These gateway businesses designated parcels will only have their entrances and exits on Page Road. They have. No access to Route sixty unless a developer buys several parcels and one or more of those parcels has access to Route sixty. These small parcels have one way in and one way out Page Road. This kind of a development on both ends of Page Road will only increase commercial traffic on a very narrow rural two lane country road. Gateway business is intended to be on major thoroughfares. Cartagallia is a major thoroughfare. And gateway business development adjacent to and west of it on Page will work, but not east of Cartagallia Boulevard. In front of Old Powhatan Estates. With the potential for, for additional commercial businesses on both ends, there will be an increase in truck and traffic, especially through truck traffic. Which is currently prohibited on this road. The intersection safety at the east end of Page Road will continue to deteriorate. If and when the planned gateway business development that is currently drawn in this comprehensive plan on both sides of Page Road is built out. Also having an economic opportunity parcel with access only to Page Road at the county line. Will continue to encourage developers to want to bring development proposal to the county without an improved road infrastructure built out. Until the county has the infrastructure plan built out for water and roads, Page Road will not support any additional type of commercial and or residential development at the county line. Also, there is not enough land in some of these Page Road parcels to have tree rufflers. To hide unsightly commercial and industrial development. Please consider reducing. The number of properties that are currently included in the Route sixty corridor east special area. By taking properties that only touch Page Road out of this growth area. Please eliminate any additional gateway business and economic opportunity development, especially on both sides of Page Road at the county line. And reduce the Route sixty corridor east special area to exclude Page Road at the county line and east of Cartagallia Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, we have one more. On Zoom and that's Mr. Mike Hall. Mr. Hall, if you'd go ahead, please.
Hey, good evening and thank you very much. I want to. Ditto reiterate exactly what Debbie Weir said. Everything that she said is absolutely true and accurate. And my wife Elaine and I, at seventeen forty-six Old Powhatan Estates, which is just off of Page Road. Absolutely concur that it just, it just does not make any sense to have small lots. On Page Road to be designated as, as economic development or any other. Anything other than residential. We have been talking about this issue for years, about the, the color coding of the parcels on the map to the. At the workshops, that the planning commission, board of supervisors meetings over several years. Trying to get us heard that it does not make sense to put these, to color code these, these parcels on Page Road. For future development, you know, on a commercial basis. Page Road cannot sustain it, cannot support it. And I swear. Half the time, it just falls on deaf ears. It's about time that somebody really look at what we're, what we've been saying. On both ends of Page Road to look at these, these landlocked parcels that are, their entrance is only Page Road. To exclude them from this color coding of economic development and cultural development. And leave them as residential as they rightfully should be. Finally, a second point, as Mr. Barham said and then, and other people. We certainly think that it's appropriate that you defer any decision on the comp plan until after the election. That's when we will have true representation and whoever is voted in by the District Two people can represent. His constituents, his or her constituents appropriately. I think this should be deferred until after the election. And I thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now open it up for discussion with staff. Any questions or comments?
Close the public hearing.
No, I haven't, I haven't actually. I'll not close the public hearing. Thank you. Any discussion? All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to echo what the number of people have said tonight. I think we should defer a decision on a comprehensive plan. Until our November meeting to allow the newly elected representative of District Two. To have an opportunity to at least review what's going on and an opportunity to comment. I have some concerns about where we are in a comprehensive plan. In addition to that, but. We really, this, from my standpoint, we really should defer this. There's no downside for us deferring it. We have no clock ticking that we have to meet.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to agree with Mr. Cox. We're eight days away from the election. And again, Mr. Barry, this has nothing to do with you, as you know. Because Mr. Perry has done a good job, as I said earlier. But the people have expressed a concern that they want the newly elected individual to be saying grace over this comprehensive plan, this plan for development of the county. And again, given the short timeframe, I can't see any downside not doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. We may need to take a vote. I do not concur. I think we've worked on this plan for well over a year now. We need to put a stake in the ground. It's, Mr. Barry, if this was going to be the case, we should have. Put up, held off on the process six months ago, not gone through all this and then get to the end mark and then say, okay, well now we need to wait. You know, Mr. Barry's voted on countless resolutions, rezonings. And, you know, his vote and his input has been fine for that. I think it's sufficient for the comprehensive plan. Obviously with the new supervisor, him or her gets in, they can certainly make amendments, look at it. I mean, that's. You know, it's always available, but I think at this point, you, for the development community, for the county, for our staff, for our own well-being. We need to move and we need to make a decision. So I would not be supporting a deferral.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we defer the decision on the comprehensive plan to our November meeting.
I will second that motion.
Can you please do a roll call, Mr. Smither?
Sir, Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Barry.
Nay.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Nay.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
All right.
So let's, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move on to some other issues that we have. First of all. The content of our package has some problems. If you'll go to page in your packet. Now we're over on, we're numbers on the right sides, okay? One thirty-four. Shows a piece of the countywide future land use plan, map five. Okay, and in that, if you'll see, you can see most of sixty east. Now go to page one ninety-one. This is a land use map for sixty corridor east special area plan. And it does not have everything on it that it's supposed to have. So we've got a, we've got a screwy set of, of maps to tell you the truth. I. You know, you don't know what you're voting on in sixty east based on this map. You really don't. So that's a problem. I don't see any reason for us to have high density housing. On Route sixty in economic development areas. Mr. Barham was right. In terms of what he said about the election. There are some that want to pretend. That smaller lots, four units per acre, and now we're talking about hundreds of potential townhouses. Are somehow going to be more affordable. That's simply no evidence from anything we've seen, from any developer, from anything that's going on to the east of us, that that'll be true. That is not a way in which there will be lower priced housing in this county, at least from my perspective. There's no evidence to support that. So I see. Nothing but more congestion. I see it as something that I don't support and won't support. We've gotten most of the housing out of Route sixty. We need to finish the job. So. One of the really interesting pieces about affordable housing, the people talk about it is, well, we need more workforce housing. We are, as Mr. Williams has said time and time and time again, the workforce for the Richmond metropolitan area. Fourteen thousand people live in this county every day. To work someplace else. We are the workforce for the metropolitan area. What we need are jobs. And the jobs will be created on sixty, not housing, but jobs. That is a thing that will allow our citizens to have a better standard of living, more money. When I talk about jobs, I'm not talking about burger doodle jobs. I'm talking about jobs where you can make a living and support your family. And that's where we should be moving with sixty. We should eliminate this issue of high density housing once and for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Problem. I would like to echo something off that sentiment. Interestingly enough, I think when you're doing a comprehensive plan, you're never going to get exactly what you want. I don't want nine units per acre down at seven-eleven and two-eight-eight. And I want to go on record saying, I don't want nine units per acre down at seven-eleven and two-eight-eight. I don't want the thirty, seventy percent split eliminated from that area. You talk about congestion. Have you been to seven-eleven and two-eight-eight in the morning? You can't move, can't get on it. So why? We went from nine units per acre over on sixty for two parcels. Two parcels, one Page Road, the other Dorset Road. And have a restriction of seventy percent commercial, thirty percent max residential. And took it from nine units to four units per. and took it from nine units to four units per acre. On seven eleven, to what one speaker mentioned tonight, at the last minute, we all of a sudden just eliminated that and went to nine units per acre and no kind of, any kind of qualifiers on that whatsoever, um, in an area where there's no water and sewer. The reason for the potential development, residential development, in my opinion, on, you know, on those areas and Page Road, Dorset Road, it's in our water and sewer district. And as you know, it's my bugaboo that we are subsidizing our waters, water year over year, and it's costing our taxpayers millions of dollars. Um, so I think I am going to approve the plan with the note that, I, I, am I crazy about every single thing in, in, in the plan? No. I don't think any of us are going to love every single item that's in the plan. Um, you know, but for the record, like I said, I'm not for the seven eleven and two eighty-eight, nine units per acre. We have apartments down there. You know, I don't think we need anymore. Um, but that's just encounter, encounter to you, Mr. Cox.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brett, would you come up, please? Brett, the apartments that we have down there that just opened up, I think you attended the open house, didn't you?
Uh, no, not this one.
You, you.
That went, went to the one, uh, there.
What are the number of units per acre for that?
What's that?
For the apartments down there.
The number of units per acre? It, it's two hundred units. I want to say. I thought it was a fifty-acre parcel.
I'm going from memory, but I, I think it was more than eight.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, let me ask you another question. When Founders Bridge came into being, was there any ratio set forth, seventy-thirty, or was it eighty-twenty?
I, I, I don't think there was one established for that.
I don't think it was either, I think. But that's some of the finest development that we have in the county. And yet it developed, and we didn't specify a, a ratio for the shopping center versus the golf villas, Bellcrest, Bellbridge, the estate villas. No ratio. But we ended up with some very fine development. Particularly because, you know, we had Mr. Sowers, who was the developer, who put together that large area and developed it comprehensively. Did a good job. Today, in accounting, you have a ninety-three, seven residential, commercial imbalance. Ninety-seven, three. So your plan for development is also a business plan. As Mr. Cox said, it makes no sense to keep adding high-density residential on Route sixty, where I sent the board and I've, you know, shared with them what I said down at the Central Virginia Transportation Authority meeting last. Where Frank Thornton, who is chairman of the CVTA, he's the long-serving supervisor over in Hanaco, he came and made a visit. And Mr. Smither and I showed him the thoroughfare network in Palatane County. We showed him Route sixty, we took him down to Founders Bridge. We showed him seven eleven, five twenty-two. And what I said to my colleagues at the meeting last down at CVTA, when it came my turn to speak, that we are, as a rural community, the workforce for the Richmond region. We always have been. We get up in the morning, we drive to where the jobs are. The jobs aren't in Palatane County, they're in Richmond, in Rocko, Chesterfield, and to a lesser extent, Hanover County, and not in Palatane. So any type of plan for development, a business plan, that's going to further exacerbate that imbalance, uh, to me, uh, I'm going to try to avoid that. And I'm going to try to focus on the commercial and changing that ratio. I think the rest of the board is committed to that as well. Let's go back down to east of two eighty-eight on seven eleven. We've always agreed, I think, as board, that that really is a place for real potential in this county. As John Watkins said one time to me, he said, David, y'all have got something down there that we don't have at the Watkins Center. You've got the river. And we're also fortunate enough to have one, possibly, you know, a lesser two or three landowners down there that are working together to plan comprehensively for the development. And Mrs. Carmack is right, we don't have water and sewer there right now, today. But that's something that's being worked on. It'll happen one day. It will, it'll, it'll come about. And when it does, what Mr. Sowers has done, setting the example going forward, is going to be very good development because you've got one of the highest per capita areas in the region down there. So whatever gets done, it's going to be done high-end, I can assure you. And it's going to be something we're going to be proud of in Palatane County, as we are already of Founders Bridge. Incidentally, that's where we're holding the Central Virginia Transit, uh, excuse me, the transportation forum of the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization on November fourth, where actually having it at the Independence Golf Center. Gip Reed is hosting it for us. So I took Mr. Thornton by to show him where we'd be having the forum. When we hire people in this county, one of the things we've done is we take them to places we like to showcase. Like Mr. Smither's got the tour of Founders Bridge, as did other previous county administrators. We also took them to places in, in the county like, you know, the mill. But we're proud of what came into being down at Founders Bridge. So let me back up, going back to the Concerns Express to Page Road and the economic development. I'll come back to the Commerce Center and the encroachment on residential down there because I'm going to be asking for at least one or maybe two of those lots going in to the north on, on, on Page Road be changed over to residential. But across the street where we've got economic development, so you'll know, you're looking at considerable amount, again, of the thirty percent, you're looking at high number, again, residential, that's going to come in at the intersection there, same problems we had before with getting on to Route sixty, getting on and off. And it'll probably trigger, you know, that R-cut intersection. So that's the reason, you know, I'm not for the, uh, economic development at that particular location because of the thirty percent component, which means if you had a hundred acres, thirty percent could be residential times four. That's a hundred and twenty units. And then you look at the trip generation, ten trips per day, you're over a thousand trips. So that said, ma'am chair, I have more things to point out, you know, some things that are in the plan that are going to need to be corrected on little, on page one thirty-five, small, small number again. I think it's big page number two oh nine. Is everybody there? Okay. Uh, if you look at the first one, you know, we're on intersection description. Something's getting left out under description. On the first one, the second one, third one, fourth one, for example, reconfigure the intersection into a, and then it goes blank. Reconfigure intersection, widen pavement, strengthen road, add turn lanes, that one's okay. Reconfigure the intersection into a blank. So the first two and looks like the fourth one need more words added.
If I may.
Yes, please.
Um, many of these, the table got kind of compressed and I have gone in and widened them, and so it's all, it's all showing. Though I did have an issue with the future land use map for countywide. That also has been remedied for the sixty special corridor plan. That map looks a little bit zoomed in, so I can fix that as well. The loss of Allison, obviously, the maps has been very much challenging for me as that's not my expertise and she was quite good. Um, but many of the things that you have both mentioned have.
Okay, so what you're telling me, you've, you've already caught it, you fixed it?
Yes.
But we don't have it printed out here.
Correct. And it really is a matter of just widening the spacing to make it appear inside a publisher, which is very simple.
So, ma'am chair, if I can, go back down to page, uh, the next page on Page Road, where it says widen pavement. We have no plan reference or cost now. Uh, I think I shared with you, uh, that I've asked the resident engineer for information, um, about where did the widening and strengthening come from? She's going to check and see if they've done any studies. And she's also going to do like she did for us on seven eleven, you know, where we had the stars showing where we had accidents and we used that, you know, for the widening. She's going to bring, bringing that forward. So before I say that I need to widen Page Road, I would like to have information that says I need to do it, and if so, where? And if we're just going to do this as a, a generic recommendation improvement, then we should be doing it for all the roads in Palatane County that are collectors at a memo.
Anything else, any other tweaks?
Uh, if you could.
Yes, one.
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Just one more. Uh, could you bring up the future land use map? It shows Page Road going into Anderson Highway, where we have the commercial lot that Ms. Weir was talking about, the commercial, the designation of Commerce Center. If you could bring that up, I'd like to make a recommendation on that. Brett, you know what I'm talking about. We talked about this. While Brett's looking at that, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the chairman, board members, staff. It was like, it was what Karen said, it's a lot of work that's gone into this. And she's right, you know, because, you know, we may disagree on certain things. Doesn't mean that at the end of the day, we can't have a good plan, or it can't be a good plan. So I, I want to emphasize, there's a lot of good things that have come about as a result of our going back and revising the plan. Sometimes you lose sight of how much you've accomplished getting off in the, in these areas where you might have some disagreement. But all in all, the board, Karen and staff, done a good job.
Ma'am, ma'am chair, while they're looking, while they're looking, I have a kind of a technical question.
Okay.
Uh, and it's for Mr. Lackney. Give you an example, if you look at page eighty-three, okay, vision and goals, it still has just the skeleton, and we asked to have all of the put in there. So, Mr. Lackney, where are we? We're going, if we vote on this tonight, which it sounds like we are, we're voting on what's in this packet, right?
Unless you amend it.
Okay, so we would have to amend this to get it straight. Look at, Mr. Lackney, look at page one ninety-one. This is the future land use map for, for, for sixty that I talked about earlier, one ninety-one.
Is this big one ninety-one or?
Big one ninety-one, yes. Okay, so this is the Route sixty corridor east special area plan. You don't see any economic opportunities on there. Does that mean there are none?
Well, this is only showing part of the map, I think.
I'm sorry, this is what's in, this is what's in here.
Right, well, and I agree, would need, if, if we're going to adopt it tonight, we want the map that, that Frank referenced, then we're going to need to have a motion to replace this map with the, the corrected map that he has prepared.
So we're going to have to correct that map. We're going to have to correct vision and goals. We're going to have to correct or consider, I mean, those we have to correct, if you're going to correct them. Mr. Williams has some things he wants. I have some concerns about another area. So we have, so what Mr. Lackney tells, we have some structural problems with what's in front of us. Okay. Uh, I have. Is Brett still, Brett, you still, is he still digging?
Nope. She got, they've got it.
Go ahead, Brett.
I'll come back.
Okay, can you, Brett, can you blow up this section of Page Road there, right, coming in off of? Is that, can you get, yeah, keep going, keep going. Brett, if we were going to address the concern about those lots going into the residential from the Commerce Center, where would it make sense to do some buffering? Because, you know, it was, it looks like there, to the very north, on the right-hand side of the road, you got two parcels there, right?
That's right.
How would you get to the second parcel?
The second parcel, you would have to go up. Manicantat, what's the, uh, what's the road name there on the right? You'd have to take that road there to get to it. It wouldn't be access from Page Road.
So which ones are you wanting to make residential, Mr. Williams? Is it the?
I'm, I'm feeling, feeling my way right now. I want to make sure that I'm given appropriate direction, uh, Ms. Carmack. Which ones are already developed in the Commerce Center where we see the purple now?
Yeah, so that would be, you see, uh, let me see if I can use the pointer on the mouse to.
I, I, I'm not hearing you from up here. I'm sorry, Brett. I'm sorry. Do you, do you have a laser or any, a pointer?
Yeah, I think we'll have to invest in one after tonight. The, so that the, where the cursor is currently sitting on it, that's the Stroud rezoning that's currently, uh, under consideration. Then beyond that, there is, there is no, those parcels are not developed yet.
Okay, the, the concern is having commercial entrances, you know, right there, you know, on, on Page Road, whether it's potentially going to cause more problems, I think, at that intersection.
Yeah, I think if you wanted, i- if you were so inclined to make some of those residential rural, rural, uh, whatever, those two, uh, would, would certainly be, you know, could provide a buffer from the existing planned and, and currently pending cases and development to the residential areas.
So I would like to go ahead and do those two, recommend that we return them back to residential, and then on the north side, those two as well. Okay. That would be my recommendation for amendment, Mrs. Carmack, ma'am chair.
If we're going to move forward, may I suggest that we start turning these into motions? Make a motion to a second, make a vote.
Good idea.
That way, we're kind of, as we're going along.
Yeah, good idea, good idea. I concur.
We've got a document, ma'am chair?
Yes.
We've got a document. It's a mess. Okay. We shouldn't be voting on something like this that's a mess. We don't have any of the text provision and goals. We've got the wrong maps. Uh, and we also have a plan for conservation subdivision. And we also have a plan for conservation subdivisions for 95% of the county. Where we've not, never gotten the information back that we need to decide whether it makes sense. We have, none of those conservation subdivisions have ever been approved. We have one that's trying to be approved and is running into major problems from VDOT. I've talked with them, okay, and so this is not about ordinances. It's about whether the concept will work, I hope it will, but we don't have any reason to believe with any data that's in front of us that it's going to be successful in this county.
But that, I thought we said we were going to address in our zoning ordinance, not our comp plan. I mean, your densities and all that are addressed in your zoning ordinance.
And, Madam Chair, it, it is not the ordinance, it's whether the concept will even work. We're way back, we're not, we're not, you're, you're right, there's some things we probably can do, but we don't even know if that concept's going to work. I'm sorry, we have, I keep bringing this up, it keeps being kicked down the road, where we're taking.
This whole plan keeps getting kicked down the road, I mean, we've been working on this for a year, I'm just ready.
We haven't been working on it a year, Mrs. Carmack, okay, and we are very close. Rather than having something as messy as we have tonight, which have still outstanding questions. I'm sorry.
Well, the deferral was denied, so at this point, we need to move forward.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we, I want to make it perfectly clear with a vote to everyone who supports high-density housing on Route 60. I would like to make a motion that we remove the two economic opportunity areas that are in a Route 60 East special land use from the map. That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Can you do a roll call?
You don't need a roll call on these unless you want one.
I want one.
No, we need a roll call.
We need a roll call.
Mr. Williams.
All right. Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do we get any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. This is quite interesting. And I'll be, probably be a little long-winded as usual. But this plan that's in existence today was written in June of 2019. We've sit in nine meetings as a board, workshops, and critiqued every little word and every typographical error and every sentence and every grammatical error and changed it. And now tonight, we have typographical errors, a map error, all of which are wrong, but the existing one had wrong information in it too. That's the interesting thing to me about this comprehensive plan. You just keep changing it and changing it and changing it by the year now, it almost seems. So I don't think that the understanding is out there completely in the public. I almost feel like I'm sitting at a, at a dealership listening to people sell cars, to be honest with you. The high-density component that keeps being mentioned, and I listen to public speakers come up there and talk about it. And the existing plan that's there now, on the four parcels that everybody's discussing, and it's four. It was Dorset Road, it was a parcel east of Holly Hills on the south side of Route 60. It was a parcel on Page Road, and it was 711 east of 288. All of those on the existing current comprehensive plan is nine units per acre. We voted at this board, this board sent in a workshop and voted three to two to remove one of those parcels and put it into industrial. That would be the one east of Holly Hills. That's not high-density, folks, that's lowering density. I, you know, I listen to the high-density game that gets played, and quite frankly, it's insulting. The Dorset Road area was nine units per acre. We voted in a workshop, three to two, to make it four units per acre. I'm sorry, but I think that cuts the density by more than, than half. We voted to reduce the density at 711 from nine units to four. And then on that so-called infamous September 29th meeting that had maybe two people from the public there, maybe it was three, where nine units per acre came back into play per the request of a supervisor. And if you look on that packet that we have, and anybody goes to the agenda and looks online, it clearly states on page 133, page 168, page 169, three pages that, here's an example, I'll read it off of page 133. Projects with only residential uses are not appropriate except within the Route 711 Village Special Area. Higher densities, higher densities, folks, higher densities up to nine units per acre may also be appropriate in the Route 711 Village Special Area. The other thing about that on page 168, the other word that gets everybody ginned up is apartments. Page 168, under economic opportunity, it states apartments and condominiums residential developments may be appropriate in the Route 711 Village Special Area. Projects with only residential uses are not appropriate except in 7, at 711. These two parcels that Mr. Cox is referring to, Page Road and Dorset and Rocky Oak Road, and the addresses to each one of those parcels are either Dorset Road or Page Road or Rocky Oak Road, that's the addresses to them all. If you take those properties and just for example, as I think one of my colleagues tonight said, you had 100 acres. Thirty percent of that 100 acres, you can put four units per acre, 120 houses. The previous Page Road proposed development was 350 houses. We've also discussed in our workshops that if a developer came in to that area, that developer would be expected to pay for the intersection adjustments. I've listened to public talk about apartments. Apartments, go to the September 29th meeting, watch it on video, go to the agenda that's out there today. And maybe apartment's just the right thing, I'm going to be like Ms. Carmack, I don't agree with apartments down there, but this is a give and take world. Sometimes you get everything you want, sometimes you don't, you need to give a little, so I'm willing to give that up. But I also know, in giving that up, somewhere in the future, as, as Mr. Williams said, we're going to have water and sewer down there. Well, about 20 years ago, somewhere in the future, we were going to have businesses all up and down Route 60 because we were going to put water in. I'm sorry, but I, I, I think that this comp plan that we've spent a year on, we started in September. We had the planning commission, and I know supervisors talked to planning commissioners, so you were working on it, staff was working on it. And then we had nine more meetings with supervisors that had, that were very lowly attended, unfortunately, unfortunately. Those situations, to me, only say, we vote on this tonight, we've got Mr. Berry who's been applauded by everyone, and I'll do it now, thank you, Tom Berry, you've done a great job. And as Mr. Williams said, it was a difficult situation. But you've also invested a lot of time into this comprehensive plan, and you know what it is. And when I watch those people come up there and speak, I could be wrong, but I don't think a single one of them live in District 2. I'm a I, I, I want it made really clear, I don't agree with apartments. The residential housing is on Page Road, if it's 30% of it versus, and how residential and 70% in housing, you could put those 30% in the backside of that property and you'd never see the houses. But let me tell you something about those 30 houses, they're going to pay property tax in this county. And those 200 apartments that's down there, those people, they're not paying taxes, they'll pay personal, personal property taxes, but they're not paying real estate taxes. The developer or the owner of it is, yes, I agree. But how many of those apartments are going to have children that we're going to pay to send to public schools in Powhatan County? If we put 30% residential on Dorset Road or Page Road, 30%, not unlimited, 30%. How many of those people are we going to pay for children to go to school in Powhatan County Public Schools? Here's a question. What if we took the 30%? And as supervisors, we can always, or we will always vote on any rezoning. So we can do anything with that rezoning, as long as we're basically within the guidelines of our comprehensive plan, which doesn't seem like a guideline, it seems like it changes by the year. You should, you should develop that, put it on the shelf for 10 years, leave it alone, and kind of make your amendments as you go with your ordinances maybe, with your comprehensive plan, I think we should have a long-term range, kind of like our 10-year CIP plan. A long-term range of how it is, and stop changing it as we go. And now, if we're going to start making amendments, why don't we just approve this plan tonight? And then the newly-elected supervisor can come in and we can make all the changes that we need after he or she gets elected. But the plan that's on the table with the few typographical errors, grammatical errors, map errors, because I'm going to, the staff's not perfect, but they put a lot of time into this, and I appreciate every minute of time they put in it. But it's kind of hard to please everybody, I get that. But they did do, from, from my perspective, a phenomenal job. That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, we have a motion
Yep.
to make it very clear who supports high-density housing on Route 60.
So it's been seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a discussion on defined high-density housing.
But no, you can, absolutely, if you want to add any comments for the motion.
The definition of high-density housing is still challenging at best. Is four, is nine? What are you defining in your motion as high-density?
I'm sorry, is that a?
Can, can he ask a question? Can he do that?
Well, he can ask, and then Mr. Cox wants to answer.
Okay, so do you want to answer or not?
I didn't want to get my hand smited.
It's up to him what he wants to say, if he wants to answer or ignore, that's refreshing.
Do you want to answer?
Yes.
Okay.
It's real simple. This county is built upon and functions as single-family homes on single lots. And once you start crowding them, which is what you're doing with four units per acre, and remember how that math works, okay? It's the density that you can put, so now we are talking about 120 units in 100 acres. That's high-density housing to me, sir, that's my best definition, thank you.
One last note before we make this vote, I would like to say to Mr. Byerley's point, any rezoning we have, we can go and we can limit, recommend, make suggestions, so I think sometimes the number gets exaggerated. You're not taking into account, I mean, when you just use that blanket statement of, you know, you can have 140 houses, well, you're not taking into account any kind of setbacks, any kind of road network. It's, it's never the maximum of what it could be. And plus, I mean, for instance, we've had rezonings where we said you have too many homes, you know, have fewer homes, make them age-restricted. So there's a lot of opportunity, I mean, this is just a guide, it's a guide.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I mean, in terms of high-density, because I think that's a, a, a very misleading statement. Let me just remind my colleagues, high-density in this county, how it was built, and I've lived here for quite some time, a little bit more than 14 or 15 years. Holly Hills is high-density. Spencer Wood, based upon the definition, Spencer Wood is high-density. Red Lane area is high-density. I'm pretty sure Norwood Creek is high-density. Branchway Forest is high-density. Those are all high-density areas based upon the definition. That's all I've got, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Two acre lots is not high-density, that's what Branchway Forest is, I'm sorry, but could we?
We'll do the roll.
No, no, you go down to two, so that's not, I'm agree with you, Mr. Chairman, let's wait.
Mr. Williams. All right. Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
No, I think, do you know the, what, what's the motion?
The motion is, the motion is to remove, to remove.
I missed that, I apologize.
Okay, well, let's, let's go back, okay, so everybody's clear, the motion is to remove the two economic opportunity areas from Route 60, that's.
Okay, sorry.
I knew you were.
Yes.
Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Byerley.
No.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
Ms. Carmack. May I move to ask a question about the sheet here in front of me? This has the I think the projects or the things that were identified in the Route 711 safety study. Is that part of our packet tonight, is that considered part of our packet tonight? The page I've got doesn't include the safety projects.
We talked about that, what did we?
Correct, that's something that's come up in inter-reading time, and it's been added.
It's what?
It's been added, it is not in your packet, but I would think you should make an amendment to add it if you'd like it.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we add what staff has provided for Table 16, recommended intersection improvements, which includes additional projects coming from the Route 711 safety study.
Okay, I second that.
Madam Chair, my apologies, let me interrupt, because I moved all of this. State law requires that an amendment to our transportation plan, which is what we have here, has to be submitted to VDOT. If I heard correctly, earlier, it was stated that we have not yet submitted our transportation plan to VDOT. So if we adopt the comprehensive plan tonight, it will need to be absent the amended transportation plan and retaining the original transportation plan. So this map or this chart is part of the new transportation plan, but the only way you could approve this tonight would be to.
Yeah, we'll take out the transportation plan because we have to get the comments back from VDOT, which I know we've been in touch with Rebecca, and she mentioned that that should not be, I mean, they're all VDOT.
Right, so if you, if, if a motion is made tonight to approve this, what needs to happen first is the transportation plan amendment needs to be removed.
Okay.
Just.
All right, Madam Chair?
I'm confused.
Okay.
Let me ask, can, can we approve this tonight without the transportation plan?
Yes, according to Mr. Lackney.
State law says if the transportation plan is going to be amended, it has to be submitted to VDOT.
No, no, can we, can we approve this without the transportation plan and then approve a transportation plan later?
Yes. Well, what would happen is the old transportation plan would still be in effect, 2019. Yeah, it's, it's the same chapter, I think Chapter 9 or Chapter 10, whatever it is, the chapter number's the same, so the 2019 Chapter 9 would stay in place. And then the rest of the plan would be the 2021.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, just, just so everybody understands.
Okay.
Well, I guess my motion then needs to be amended to include this table in what's going to be sent to VDOT for approval.
Right.
That's my motion.
Okay, I second.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
Can we just go with the amendment? Can we just go with the amendments? What do you think? I mean, because if we make a list
We haven't approved it.
Yeah.
I think you just head nod, yes, include this, what you send to VDOT.
Can do.
And then, at some point, if you, if a motion's made to go forward with approving a comp plan tonight, you're going to first need to make a motion to take out the transportation plan portion of it, just
Okay.
Full disclosure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. Byerly's got his hands up. Mr. Byerly, do you mean to have your hand up? No, I do not. I think it's probably been up for a little while.
If you need to speak, just yell out, it's easier than waiting for that hand.
Never put it back down.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
What are we going to do about the missing text on page eighty-four for vision and goals? How do, how do we, how do we deal with that?
Page eighty-four?
Eighty-four, yes, ma'am. This page is intentionally left blank. What we have, what we have is the outline of our, our goals from our vision and goals, and we specifically asked at our last meeting to have all of the text moved in. So I don't even know what, you know, I
No, that was basically from our strategic plan. So I would say just amend to, yes, move the text from our strategic plan into chapter three.
Starting, chapter three, starting at page eighty-four?
Yep, exactly.
That works. That's a, that's a motion.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so that takes care of that.
Okay, then you, the map.
The map on page one ninety-one.
We need the
The Route sixty corridors, East Special Area Plan.
Yeah. We need to put the proper
The complete.
To complete map.
As well as the total future land use map for the entire county.
Exactly.
Both of those ones.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we replace the map on page one ninety-one with the complete and Route sixty E Special Area Plan map.
Second.
A little convoluted.
We got the All those in favor say aye.
Madam Chair? Matt, I have a question.
Yeah.
You already voted, but that's okay. My question is, as opposed to having ten amendments for each one of these, why don't you just roll, as Mr. Hopkins kind of tried to suggest there, put both of that land use map in with the other one that Mr. Cox was talking about? But you voted, so
No, that did include both of them. It included both of them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it included both.
Just by way of reminder to the truncated text on that table, Frank pointed out it's simply a formatting printer error, but just so we make it clear, I'd suggest a motion saying that the final version takes away the truncated text and completes the text.
Send the transportation plans, we're good.
We're going to include the transportation plan.
Never mind, it's getting long night.
All right. Anything else or is this it?
Mr. Chairman?
We, I don't think we took a vote, or did we, on the, on those parcels on Page Road?
Did not.
Okay, I would like to make a motion. Those four parcels. Brett, help me out here. How do I identify those four parcels in terms of being able to designate them in a motion?
Yep, so those would be the, the two parcels on the southwest side of Page Road there. So I clearly see the ones you're talking about, but they're the two.
Yes, those two, and then going to the north on the, excuse me, yeah. Those two parcels there, when, you know.
On the other side of
On the other side.
Those two, yeah.
So my motion is to take those out of Commerce Center and move them back to residential.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should ask, do we have any comments, any discussion on this? Oh, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. And my last one, Madam Chair. On Page Road, remember I provided those comments about waiting for information from Rebecca Worley on accident history and any possible studies that have been done? Taking that out of a widened pavement.
Well, that's in the transportation section, so it's going to get amended anyway. Anything else? Mr. Byerly? Any comments, any suggestions before we take a vote?
Nope.
Okay. Can I just say that I move that we approve the proposed comprehensive plan minus the transportation section as amended tonight? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Do we need to do a roll call for this? Okay.
Mr. Williams?
Before we do the roll call, I just got one comment and I'm going to be brief because I'm going to try to treasure the moment that we're here actually voting. Because I know everybody is anxious to get this done. And again, I want to thank everybody for their hard work on this, you know, the chairman, board members, staff, it was a team effort. But not going into any more lengthy speeches or anything like that, I think we've all clearly stated our reasons for the plan and our reasons why, you know, we're not going to be supporting the plan. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, what do you, did you vote aye or nay or nay?
Naye.
Okay.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Nay.
Mr. Byerly?
Yes.
Ms. Carmack?
Yes.
Okay, we will now have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six Bell Crest Circle. I'll try to be much brief for this time, then I'll close the first go around. I respect your decision to adopt the comprehensive plan tonight. You know much more than I know about the ins and outs of what goes in the plan and what makes up the plan. There is one thing, though, that I know more than you know, and that's how it feels down here to listen to you up there. And what y'all decided to do on Route seven eleven to allow nine units per acre along the county's only scenic highway feels wrong. I can only hope that in your wisdom, it's a right decision, but it feels wrong down here. The second thing I'd like to say tonight, and it's been mentioned a few times, but it can never be said often enough, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Berry for his service. When he raised his hand, I guess, and decided to serve the citizens of District Two, at that time I did live in District Two, and for a few months we didn't have a voice on the board, and it was very frustrating. And your willingness to serve the county and to serve District Two is a wonderful thing. And I think that you did it with a common sense point of view and you did it with a civil manner, which in this day and time is not always the way things are done. And I, you know, I just can't say enough how much I appreciate you stepping forward and helping us out. And whatever you choose to do in the future, best wishes on, best wishes on the journey ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, ma'am.
Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments.
County administrator comments?
Yes, I'm just to say, Mr. Berry, thank you from staff. We appreciate your efforts for the last six months. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Board comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Berry? I'd just like to add my name to those expressing appreciation. It's been fun to work with you, but it's also been fun to get to know you. The fact that you know how to smoke meat, okay, really, really well moves you up in my world, okay, as a barbecue king. So just beyond working with you on the board and your thoughts and your feelings, and we haven't always agreed, we didn't agree tonight, that's okay. I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate getting to know you and I hope we will continue to stay in contact. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes.
Tom is normally customary for the retiring supervisor to take the remaining board members over pizza and beer. I'm available for the invitation. Soon as you extend that invitation, we will be appreciative.
Mr. Byerly, oh, I was going to say, Mr. Byerly, Mr. Berry?
Madam Chair, just a brief moment, echo Mr. Williams and Mr. Cox. Mr. Berry, thank you very much. You stepped up in a, in a pretty challenging situation as, and as Mr. Cox referred, we don't always agree, but that's part of being on the team. You don't always agree, but you find a way to get through it and you move on. And you, you brought some good points to the board, you brought a different perspective on some issues, and best wishes to you in the future and your endeavors. Thanks a lot for everything that you did for the citizens of District Two and Powhatan County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Berry?
Madam Chair, I do have some musings and personal thoughts on my last meeting here. Like I told you, so, no. Really big riot. Bad eyesight. As was mentioned also, not very good hearing. There's no denying the fact that the best situation for the last seven months would have been to have an elected individual in the seat I have filled for this time. It's unfortunate that this could not occur. I wish it had, but an alternative solution needed to be found. It was implemented and I filled that seat. It was unacceptable for some and that's fine, but it is what it is. I believe I fulfilled my role of dignity and more importantly ethical behavior. I've not made everyone happy. I did not intend to, nor would I expect to, is never one of the objectives. The objective was to serve and represent the district and citizens to the best of my ability while following the Constitution of Virginia and the United States. There are some things that you as citizens should know about this board. This board, every one of them, welcomed me as one of them and I thank them for that. I came in from the outside. We don't always agree, but we've always been cordial and professional to each other in every interaction. We, as a board, respect each other even when we do disagree, because we all have the desire to make our districts and the county as good a place to be as possible. And that comes from you as citizens. As citizens, we love it when you contact us. Now, with that being said, when you email and call us at six o'clock on the night of the meetings, doesn't give us a whole lot of time to work with. Try to plan ahead if you would, just as a please. I want you to know, we read and respond to all citizen contacts. We take them seriously. We need to know what your thoughts are, and I believe all of us do this because we do care. We represent the citizens of the district as well as the citizens of the county. We want to do what is going to make the best county possible for everybody. We're a local board that deals with local issues primarily. Yes, we have the ear of state and federal legislators, but we have input and we have their ear. We don't control, we can't define, we can't ignore, we can't dictate anything. We try to work together to come to a reasonable solution. And it goes very similarly to the school board. We have had a contentious relationship and we still do, but we try to, and we all have the belief that we are doing the best thing for the community and the citizens that have a stake here in our education system. We are here because of you and to serve you. Now, onto a few thanks. I first want to thank my parents and other family members. Without their influence, growing up, I would never have even considered this type of position. I also want to thank my wife and my children. They've put up with a lot for me during my time on the board and in general. You know, it's a pile of meetings during the day when I could have been at school or done something with them. My wife Christie keeps things going, is supportive and is always there for me and the family. She's by far much more politically sensitive than I, and I have no doubt in my mind, many times when I've spoken or thrown out ideas, she was like, what the heck is he thinking? My children, Natalie and Gracie, look forward to me not being on the board anymore and just going back to being dad. You know, they want to see me more and they also want me to stop being pulled and by everybody going, hey. My family is great and I'm hoping my time off the board is going to improve that even more. In a similar note, I have one mention scouting. Scouting got me involved in public service more than thirty years ago. First as a volunteer librarian and then as a volunteer firefighter. Scouting, regardless of boy or girl, can set the next generation of leaders onto the correct path for success. This path will lead to the top for a few, both in scouting, Eagle Scout, or the Gold Award, as well as the top in public service, as can be witnessed by many great Americans. Encourage your children to get involved now and they will become more likely to remain involved into the future, and they will one day sit in these seats. Karen, Mike, David, Bill, Ned, Tom, as well as all the county staff I've interacted with. I will miss working with you. I, we will always be peers in some respect. My time here has been enlightening for me and I hope I was able to lend a different point of view for you while serving the citizens. In closing, thank you for the honor of serving you as a board of supervisor. My service will conclude in the coming days and I want everyone to get out there and vote. Find a new, find someone to fill this chair that is going to meet your expectations and is going to represent you. Vote for whom you think is going to do the best job. You have some great choices on the ballot locally and beyond, and you should take advantage of the rights you have in this great country, state, county and district. With that said, I look forward to continuing to serve you, the citizens of the county, as I go back to riding a fire engine and teaching firefighters here in Powhatan County. Thank you.
Madam Chair, real quickly, if I may, Mr. Berry is available as a writing candidate coming up on the election day. It's B-E-R-R-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
You're welcome.
Okay, closed meeting.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body with respect to administration and parcel near the landmark center. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty-seven thousand eight-three of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County is hereby authorized discussion of the four stated matters in closed meeting need that as a motion.
So moved.
Sargent.
Roll call on this?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ready guys?
Yeah, Mike.
Hey, we need to roll back on so we can come out for the session. I thought you heard us break up. Oh, okay.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
You're back.
All right, who's gonna read?
To the best of your knowledge, do you certify that the only matters discussed in the closed
Mr. Berry.